Welcome to Burlington's Candidate Forum. My name is Alan Foles and I'll be moderating the discussion. I have a press panel with me here to ask the questions. Please welcome Nikki Cadillac of the Burlington Buzz and Sidney Bowles, the B News news producer. At this session, we focus on the race for Select Board. We have three candidates for two positions. They're both three-year positions. The incumbent is Joseph Morandi. Due to a death in the family, he will not be available tonight. We offered to move this forum, but he said we should go ahead without him. We have two challenges. They are Bradford Bond and Sarah Colley. And before we dive in, a quick disclaimer. Candidate Brad Bond is a member of the BCAT Board. Board members do not have special access or information and do not receive any special treatment. Welcome, everyone. All right, let me review the ground rules. Here is how we will proceed. Each candidate will offer a one-minute opening statement. We've drawn lots for the order. After that, our press panel will ask questions of the candidates. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to respond. We'll alternate between members of the press and we'll rotate through the candidates for the first response. Next, each candidate is allowed to ask one question of the other candidate, again with 90 seconds to respond. The questions must be answerable by both candidates. Finally, each candidate will close with a two-minute closing statement. We'll use the same order as the opening statements. The closing statement is the opportunity for rebuttals to statements made during the course of the forum if the candidates so wish. In the interest of covering as many subjects as possible, we'll try to keep a close watch on the clock, so please frame your responses accordingly. Well, if everyone's all set, we will get started. All right, by the lottery, we decided that Sarah Colley will go first. So Ms. Colley, you have one minute.
Thank you very much. First, I want to offer my personal condolences to Joe and the Morandi family. My heart goes out to them. Also, thank you, BCAT, for hosting, to the moderator for facilitating, to the press, and to my fellow candidate. I've lived in Burlington for over 20 years now with my husband, Tony Salamoni, who grew up here. Our four kids go to the Burlington Public Schools, and we utilize and appreciate all the amenities this town has to offer. I also work for the town in the accounting office. I'm at Town Hall every day and have an inside perspective on how our town functions and good relationships with town employees. I'm a town meeting member for Precinct 7, which has been a great learning experience, especially around the budget cycle. Over the years, I've spoken up at various board and committee meetings on behalf of resident concerns. I led the opposition to Windview Heights 2, which is an ongoing battle involving many hours of work, including writing and presenting a town meeting warrant article that was widely supported. Every step of the way, it's with the concerns of residents and what is best for Burlington as a whole at the forefront. That dedication, preparation, and commitment to service is what I would bring to the table as a Select Board member. I love this town, and I want to do my part to make it the best place it can be. I'm driven and excited to do the work that needs to be done to lead in a way that is transparent, responsible, collaborative, and centered around the residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Opening statement, Bradford Bond.
All right, thank you. Well, thank you to BCAT and the panel for holding this forum today. Yes, I'm Brad Bond, and I'm running for Select Board. So I believe I have the skill set and the knowledge base to work on the Select Board at this time, as the town of Burlington is facing some financial challenges. Now, a reporter in town has referred to me as a veteran of town government. I suppose that's correct. I've been a member of Town Meeting and Ways &amp; Means for 18 years now. On Ways &amp; Means, I served as chair as we were coming out of the economic troubles of 2008, and I'm still proud to say that we kept the tax rate low and yet maintained services and avoided any layoffs. Over the years, I've served on every single subcommittee on Ways &amp; Means, so that just means that I've worked with every department head and have a working knowledge of every department, including the schools. With this background, as well as my leadership experience in various organizations in town, I believe I can make a positive contribution as a member of the Select Board.
Okay, thank you very much. We are now ready for our press panel, and we will begin with Sidney Bowles of B News.
All right, thank you, Alan, and thank you, candidates. Let's start pretty broad. First question to you both. What do you see as the most pressing issue facing Burlington, and how would you address it as a member of the Select Board?
And we will start with Brad.
All right. So as I mentioned in my introductory remarks, we've got some financial challenges in town. We have the luxury at the moment of having the next-to-last lowest tax rate in the area, and yet we have the third-highest spend rate on services in town. I'm concerned that that could perhaps be in jeopardy. We've got a squeeze on the revenue side, of course, due to COVID, due to the change in how people buy retail services and such. The mall is under pressure, and yet we also have some expense-side challenges. We're finding cost of building projects are phenomenally higher than they've been in the past, and even I believe there's going to be pressure on town salaries as well as we're competing for a thin labor market these days. What we need to do is, right now, we've got, at the last town meeting, Melissa Tentaklis gave a wonderful presentation on plans for rezoning the Mall Road and Wheeler Road District. That will help us on the revenue side as we build out. Again, we're hoping to, I would hope that we could get there within the next 10 years. On the expense side, unfortunately, we're not dealing with this in a vacuum where I think we're just going to have to ride that out. But again, I think we need to look to growing our way through this financial crunch.
Thank you. Same question, Sarah.
Sure. So I could go into a number of issues that are very pressing for Burlington right now, but I would say the main one is the state of our municipal buildings and the fact that we have potentially three very large municipal building projects coming at us all at once. First is the police station. It is absolutely necessary that we get a new police station. It is in terrible shape. I have serious concerns about the long-term health effects for anybody that works in that building on a daily basis due to the air quality and the mold that you can clearly see on the walls. So we need a new one built as quickly as possible to meet the current and the future needs of our department. In terms of how to fund that, my opinion is that it should come out of our standard budget process. We put some money down via free cash. I believe we have about $65 million in free cash right now, so take some out of there and then bond the rest without having to go through the process of a debt exclusion. It would be quicker, smoother. It doesn't waste time or resources. That building serves the entire community, and not that we have to rush the building process. We should really take care to make sure that is the right building, but the funding process should be pretty smooth. It's the duty of the town to serve, for our public servants, to get this done as quickly as possible. Now, we have two schools also, Fox Hill and the New High School, and for those, I would suggest a debt exclusion, funding it outside of our normal budgetary constraints to allow residents to have a say. The quality of our schools is important to the town as a whole, but the specific building, you know, serves a small constituency of the town. So I think the residents have a right to have a say in that. It is unfortunate that we're in this position with all of these buildings all at once, so much work. Yep, I have to question the lack of foresight of those in charge of the budget, like Ways &amp; Means, for not calling attention to the declining revenues and potential bottleneck years ago and pushing for action or a clear plan sooner. But now we're here, and swift action is not only warranted but necessary.
Thank you very much. All right, to the next question, we go to Nikki Cadillac of the Burlington Buzz.
Thank you. Thanks for being here today. Sustainability is a hot topic sort of everywhere, and we're talking about sustainability in municipal buildings as well. I would love to know what you think Burlington can do to work towards something like a Tree City or a zero-carbon designation and really decrease our carbon footprint and increase sustainability across the town.
This time, we'll start with Ms. Colley.
Sure. I think that's always top of mind, like I talked about with municipal buildings. Both the Police Building Committee, as well as the High School Building Committee, are already in these early stages, talking about how they can build sustainably, what actions they can take to meet those goals. It's always top of mind. We have things in town that, you know, we have a composting program for folks where people can, there's a pickup program, there's a composting bin at DPW that you can get. I also wonder if we can get our commercial sector involved in that kind of thing to reduce food waste, so expanding that composting program to them as well as to the schools, and maybe that's on the school committee, but that's just one idea. Also, you know, water conservation is always on the mind. Residents are pretty good about adhering to bans, but that's just something that we have to keep in mind, both in the residential and the commercial sector.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bond, the same question.
Yes, so DPW, John Sanchez, before he left, was able to implement tighter controls on our energy usage, and we no longer have, we're no longer heating the air around the library building now. He's got that all tightened up. So we have, I believe we've been working toward becoming a green community. I believe there are hurdles that we have to reach to attain that, but I believe that's on our radar, and we're working toward that goal. And again, that's great that the building projects have an eye toward that.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next question, we go back to Sidney.
Thank you. One of the major issues facing Burlington is a shortage of affordable housing. According to a 2022 Housing Needs Assessment Report, we are short more than 2,000 units of affordable housing to meet current needs. But new housing developments often face pushback due to their location, traffic concerns, other issues. How do you plan to, or what are your thoughts about addressing the shortage of affordable housing, and how would you respond to the concerns from neighbors?
And again, we'll start with Sarah.
Sure. So housing is one of the issues, if you ask me for more than one issue, that is a serious issue that we need to be facing within the next years. It would be housing. I know that I have spoken up against a specific affordable housing, well, it's not affordable, it's only six affordable housing units, but I have spoken up against the Windview Heights condo development. However, that does not mean I'm against affordable housing at all. In fact, I think we should be increasing it. I know on paper, we're 13% affordable housing. In reality, it's more like 5% or 6%, so that doesn't cut it. We need to make an effort. As a Select Board member, I would work closely with the Housing Authority, the Housing Partnership Committee, as well as the Planning Board to identify areas in town where multifamily housing could be, make the most sense, as well as affordable housing and senior housing. I also want to, this is, I don't know, maybe not necessarily affordable housing, but another housing issue is just making accessory units easier to have on a single family. I think that just widens and diversifies the stock of our housing. So yeah, ultimately, I think it should be the goal of the Select Board to increase, diversify our housing stock, including affordable and senior.
Okay, and Brad, same question.
Yeah, it's a concern. I have a daughter who was born and raised in town, and she would really like to be able to stay and eventually buy her own house, and that is indeed looking, it looks a bit bleak these days. So right now, we've got lots and lots of more and more expensive houses going in here in town. It looks like that wave may have peaked, and I'm beginning to hear that prices are coming down. We do have some, so we're going to have a zoning overlay as requested by the MVTA, and we'll be zoning an area that will hopefully, eventually, again, this doesn't happen overnight, eventually lead to some more affordable housing. Again, I keep looking at the plans for the Mall Road, Wheeler Road District, and citing my daughter again, she was involved with some of the early community input sessions on that, and she spoke up for, you know, having locations for young employees to be able to live near where they work. So hopefully, we'll be able to work with property owners, and again, I believe we'll have to get to this through zoning, and so I'm fully in support of moving in that direction.
Thank you. For the next question, we will return to Sidney.
Right. According to the Economic Development Office, late last year, about 16% to 18% of Burlington's office space is currently vacant as work patterns have changed post-pandemic. And because many office leases are longer term, it's expected that more offices may become vacant in the coming years. Those vacancies are already impacting local water and sewer rates and could have impacts on Burlington's tax revenue. How do you see the Select Board's role in those specific challenges, and what would you suggest as solutions?
Hey, we'll begin with Mr. Bond.
Certainly. So, and again, that's where, that's the revenue drain that I was addressing. So again, we've got to move, continue with the push on mixed use, so have these facilities, have retail housing and less office space than original. I have to give credit to the Board of Health for changing our regulations and I believe making us, what is it, a gold status community. So we've actually brought in 20 biotech companies over the last decade or so, hopefully with more on the way. So we're going to have to reset our sights from the Class A office and retail and see about, just as we're making this a biotech hub, there's certainly other areas of technology, and this is, you know, the 128 Beltway with lots of tech here, so perhaps we can continue. And again, we may need to expand our Economic Development Office to help promote Burlington and reach out across the country and continue to be a good spot for companies coming in.
Thank you. Same question, Ms. Colley.
So I think we hired our Economic Development Director, Melissa Tentaklis, at just the right time to deal with this. We have a fantastic resource right in Town Hall to address this issue, and she has been on top of it for a number of years now, knowing that it's coming down the line and bringing on new business along the way. We know tenants are downsizing, more people are working from home, so what can we do with that vacant office space? I think we need to look at and think about how we can diversify that area, because clearly it can't all be retail or office space. I actually attended last year the design workshop and site visit for the Mall Road corridor, where the community could give feedback and get a sense of the vision for that area. You really got to see the overabundance of parking areas and the number of partially empty buildings. So it's about reimagining that area and adapting to a modern way of life. We've done great at advancing our life sciences community, so continuing to push that and explore ways of bringing in more life sciences, as well as looking to create areas for multi-use buildings, so commercial and residential space, so people are walkable to shops and amenities. But, you know, like Sidney said, these vacancies have ripple effects, and they are affecting, you know, most recently affecting our water and sewer rates, which are going up by 3% more than expected, so due to the lack of water usage from these vacancies. So it is a very top-of-mind issue and something we need to just continue to support, Melissa Tentaklis, and our Economic Development Office.
Thank you. Next question comes from Nikki.
Thank you. Our town government and our town departments do not reflect the diversity of backgrounds, be it cultural, linguistic, racial, ethnic, or religious, that are represented in our community at large. And following the disbanding of the Select Board's DEI Committee, $20,000 was allocated by the Select Board to have DEI training for the Select Board. What do you think we're missing out on as a town by not having representation of all of the different kinds of people that live here in town government? And what would you suggest doing with those, or what would you support and promote doing with those $20,000 on your time in the Select Board?
And again, we'll start with Brad.
So since our talk in the podcast, Nikki, I've been thinking about this very issue. So I was wondering, so there are two issues. There is the hiring within government itself and then taking part in elected and appointed roles. I was wondering, just as we've had, we had a recent Civic Expo in town, I was thinking about, you know, back in high school when they'd have all the clubs come out and find, let students know what's available. I'm wondering if we could put funds at that level to have more regular, you know, meet the departments, meet the boards, and reach out to the community and say, come on in and, and again, thank you to Nikki for the work you've done with explaining what all the various boards and commissions do. People don't know this, but I think that would be an active way to do some reach out, at least to get people in the pipeline of leadership and participation at that level. When it comes to hiring for jobs, I mean, that becomes, that's a little more problematic because you need folks to apply for the jobs. So how do you, how do you get word out? That's a hard problem. It's not local to us, don't have a solution, but again, perhaps having more forums and information sessions, that might be a useful way to spend the $20,000.
Thank you. Same question, Ms. Colley.
So I'm on Town Meeting, I'm in Town Hall every day. I work across departments, and I also watch committee meetings. It's very clear that our public employees and our representatives, the makeup of our public employees and representatives do not match the makeup of our residents, and with that can come blind spots. And so how can we identify those blind spots, work through them, so that we can better serve the community? Because that's really what it's all about. It's about service to the public. I was on Town Meeting when we voted for that $20,000 of funding for DEI training, which is proposed by the Select Board. I voted in favor. I have no idea what is going on with that or if we're getting an update, but I think historically, the schools have been a little bit more proactive with addressing diversity, although I know there's a recent controversy with the DEI job posting. But the town has been a lot more baby steps with addressing DEI. There was a DEI committee, which was disbanded after one year, and then there really hasn't been much else done. Burlington is a diverse community with race and age, religion, languages spoken. It's an important issue to explore so that we can serve our community, like I said. You know, as a town employee, we take these cybersecurity trainings. They're online, they're, you know, they present certain scenarios, you work through them, how to approach them. I know cybersecurity and DEI are very different topics, but perhaps we can explore similar trainings around diversity and roll those out to employees as well as committee members to get a, just to get a sense of any cultural blind spots you have, because we all have them. So that's just an idea for how we could use that funding. I don't know if it's been explored, but I would like to explore that as a Select Board member.
Okay, thank you. Next question, we'll stay with Nikki Cadillac of the Burlington Buzz.
All right. What, okay, sorry. I had a little bit of a freak out. Okay. What is your plan for increasing community engagement in our town? And I'm going to follow that up by saying, and community engagement to me would mean not just showing up at elections, where our election turnout is about 13% to 15% for local elections, but also showing up at town events, running for office, seeking employment. What do you think we can do to increase that community engagement in town? And I apologize if this is slightly redundant.
Okay, we'll start with Sarah.
So this is a topic that's near and dear to my heart, as I know it is to Nikki with her work on the Buzz. I would love to see more people engaged and involved in the town. How we do that, I know Nikki's done a great job of it, and I don't know how we can do that as a town. I know that last year, there was a communications study that the Select Board did in conjunction with UMass Boston, and one of the recommendations from that study was that we're at a point in our growth in Burlington that it might be beneficial to hire a communications director. You know, whether that's feasible with our financial state to have another salary, it's something that definitely interests me, and I would like to explore, because I think the main issue is communication, and it's, you know, a two-way dialogue with the residents so that they can be informed and know how they can get involved and what kind of events they can go to. Right now, the communication across town is siloed across all the departments. They all do it differently, there's inconsistencies. If we did have a communications director, that would be an opportunity to streamline and strengthen our communications and hopefully fill those gaps of, you know, people who don't have the information so that they know what opportunities are out there for them.
Okay, same question, Brad.
So I've been involved with BCAT for a very long time, and we provide news, a Friday news broadcast, and we're now providing daily newsletters, and we've got Facebook and YouTube and all of these various avenues. And yet, I learned this as a town meeting member early on while walking my dog, one of the things I ended up doing in talking with my neighbors, chatting with my neighbors, is dispelling rumors. I mean, rumors are incredibly sticky. Information, not so much. People latch on to the various rumors, and so it spreads word of mouth. So it's a, it's a, it's a hard problem. I do a lot of volunteering in town, and I get frustrated that there only seem to be about, I would, the number I've used in the past is that there are only about 250 people that you see doing all of these events. So how do you, how do you grow that? Word of mouth, getting the truth out there, talking with neighbors, but having more town events. I know I got involved just getting to one of the Concert on the Commons and seeing the BCAT truck and asking what the heck BCAT is. I'm going to take the fact that there, and I said this on the podcast, the fact that only 13% or so percent of the town votes, I'm going to take that as a positive in saying that most people are working their lives and taking care of their families and don't have any particular complaints. But again, the more participation, the more voices, the better.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, we have time for one more question from the press, and we'll return to Sidney Bowles of B News.
Okay. And I think we will also return to a topic, Sarah, that you touched on, so this may be a little redundant as well, but we do have a number of major capital budget items on the, or capital projects on the horizon. The Fox Hill Elementary School, the police station, and the high school, most pressingly. How do you think Burlington should handle the cost of these additional projects? How would you characterize your role, should you be elected to the Select Board, in arguing for the stance that you support? And do you have a sense for how you would prioritize those spends?
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Bond.
So, so in defense of Ways &amp; Means and Town Meeting, over the years, we've known about the issue with the police station. We've known that we need to, we knew that our schools are getting to be 50 years or so old. In fact, when I was chairing Ways &amp; Means, Chief Kent had just started, and he was appalled at the condition of the police station. And every year, Chief Kent would come in, and it's like, I understand the need, and we're going to get there as fast as we can. Around the time I was starting on, around the time I was starting on Ways &amp; Means, we got dinged by the bond rating agencies for not reinvesting enough in our infrastructure. We were running at, you know, that kind of 2% to 4% range of the operating budget. They dinged us, they said we really need to be running at 6% to 8%. So we have gotten to the point where we're addressing needs of the building before we run into issues like with what happened with Wildwood, what happened over at the Human Services Building. So we are getting ahead of the curve. The projects with DPW took far longer than any of us expected, and especially the second fire station house. So that unfortunately kicked the police station down the road, and I'll say now, whatever it takes to get this thing, this project done as soon as possible, I support that. With the schools, we've got a plan. The Fox Hill needs to be redone. They've convinced me that it is indeed a need and not a want, and because of having matching funds, that project also needs to get done as soon as possible in order to preserve those matching funds. So there are a lot of people who want to do different things with debt exclusions and such, either to, either to stop the project or move the project along, and I will take a stand that I want to see both projects, as much as I'm gnashing my teeth at the bump in the tax rate, but that bump will be there whether we go debt exclusion or not.
Thank you very much. And finally, Sarah.
Yeah, so I feel like I answered this question already, but I will try to answer it again and add something new. So obviously, my priority is to get the police station done and built as quickly as possible. Like I said, I have serious concerns with the shape and the air quality in that building. You know, there's been, already been a lot of work put into where that should go, and it's been decided that the site that it's on is the best place for it. And I know that the building committee is already getting, you know, mockups of what it might look like, so they're heading in the right direction. My role is just to support that as much as I can and, you know, talk with the chief, who I already who I already have spoken to quite a bit, and make sure he knows that I support the project and want to move along as quickly as possible. The schools, I obviously support our schools. Fox Hill is, is starting to go. I think the high school might take some creativity to, to go, talk about how we're going to handle that funding. You know, that's, like you said, this is a lot of municipal buildings at once, so how can we think creatively? I think at the last high school building committee, somebody brought up the prospect of potentially addressing it in three stages so that we can, you know, spread out that tax burden across, over time. So they're still going in one section of the building while one's being worked on. And I have no idea of the, the details around that or if that's feasible, but it is a creative idea. And I think when we're, we're thinking about all of this funding and all of these projects that need to be tackled at once, you have to think outside of the box. And that was just one, one idea.
Great. Okay, we now move on to the next phase. You each get to ask the other candidate one question. And we will begin with Bradford Bond asking your question.
Okay. So my top several questions, we have already discussed thoroughly, so luckily I have a third. So we've got several departments, building department, planning board, that have had open positions for some time now and, and I've heard anecdotally, that, anecdotally that when there were positions open in Town Hall, we, there was a day when we received, you know, 100 plus applications and now we're receiving 2, 3, 4. What, what could, what could you and the Select Board do to help us do a better job searching out candidates for these, for these hard to, hard to fill positions?
Yeah, that's a great question. It's something that is not just a Burlington issue. Almost all municipalities in Massachusetts are facing a hiring issue and a staffing issue. I have a background, actually a professional background in human resources and recruiting. So I'm, you know, well-versed in the hiring process. I know my background is in the private sector, this is the public sector, so that's a little bit different. But I think I have a good sense of, you know, the, the hiring process and the recruiting process. I don't know that enough effort is getting, is being put into, you know, putting the job, job descriptions out there more widely. You know, I haven't looked too far into the details of that, but yes, I understand there are some longstanding job openings that have, that have not been filled and it's unfortunate. It's definitely something that I can use my human resources experience to address. I've already talked to Paul Sagorino about it and got his thoughts about it. So I, I would continue to do that and try to help all of our departments with that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Colley, your final question to Brad.
Sure. So I know as we've beat to death discussing having to fund at least three different municipal building projects in short order, in hindsight, is there anything you would have done differently serving on a town board or committee that would have positioned Burlington to be better prepared?
So as I said, none of these projects were surprises. So I've been on, you know, so been doing this almost 20 years. There's always, when we're looking at the bonding schedule, there's always a bind that's five years out. There's always that bind five years out. And we find ways to do bans, short-term bans. We've, as you pointed out, we've paid down some debt with free cash. The, and, and the, the, the schools were coming up, the, the school and the police station were the next in the list in the pipeline. The, the difference is building costs are, have gone up exorbitantly and, and unexpectedly, I can't believe how much each of those projects cost, you know, compared to the, again, I've, I've been part and parcel of the last, what, five, five or six projects. So that, that hit us unexpectedly and I'm not sure, other than making sure that we're saving money in the emergency fund and the stabilization fund, I'm not sure that anybody could have predicted that, that increase and, and now we just have to, now we have to spend the extra money.
Okay, great. Now it's time for closing statements. You have two minutes for these. And as we determined earlier by lottery, we will begin with Sarah Colley.
Thank you very much. And thank you for giving us this time to speak on issues that are impacting our town. I'm proud of my leadership on town issues, my commitment to residents and my passion for the town of Burlington. The combination of my professional experience in both the private and public sectors, my experience on town meeting and advocating for residents when they felt they hadn't been heard, as well as my personal lived experience as a woman and mom, brings a different and important point of view to the Select Board. We are at a critical juncture for our town. I believe it would be a missed opportunity to elect the same people who have served on boards, whose lack of foresight and leadership around our declining revenues helped contribute to our precarious financial situation. Experience is one thing, but oftentimes with experience comes preconceived notions and complacency. Quality of experience and a new, fresh perspective are worth much more than just the number of years. Now is the time to elect someone to this board with a proven record of advocating for accountability and transparency of our leaders. I love the town of Burlington. I live here, I work here, and we raise our kids here for a reason. I'm running this campaign not as part of any political machine in town or with any conflicts of interest on any other board or committee in town. I'm running myself, for you, the residents, because I want this town to be the best place it can be. This is a chance to strengthen what we love about Burlington while embracing and investing in the future. I promise to work hard for and with Burlington residents as your Select Board member. Please make sure you vote, whether it's on April 6th at the high school, early voting at Town Hall, or by mail. Your voice is important and I hope that I can be your choice for Select Board for the town of Burlington. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And final statement, Bradford Bond.
Certainly. So he said, closing remarks on rebuttal. So yes, so I've, I'm, I'm, I'm the person with the old stale ideas. Well, I would say that I, I am, my, my background is in academics, I'm, I'm in software. We do a lot of creative thinking and thinking outside of the box. So I, if I have to say so myself, I am open-minded and listening to ideas. And in fact, during the course of the campaign and talking with people, I've been hearing a wide range of positions on many of these issues and it's, it's got me thinking about, it's got me thinking about the range, the, the range of options even more. I do take, I do take input seriously and want to do what's best for Burlington. So again, I've got good working relationships with department heads, I've got good working relationships with, with all the people on, on all these various boards and get along with folks. And I've gotten us through some tough transitions, both on Ways and Means and if I, if I'm allowed to cite BCAT here as well. So, so just to what I had for my closing, my wife and I moved to Burlington in 96. We love this community dearly. It's proven to be a wonderful place to raise our daughter and it's important that we keep Burlington a wonderful place for residents to raise their families. There are currently revenue pressures, as we've discussed at length, but with thoughtful planning, active economic development and a little luck, we should be able to get, keep Burlington the great town that it is. Thank you again to BCAT and the panel for this opportunity to discuss the issues.
Well, that brings us to the end of the forum. In closing, I thank both Brad Bond and Sarah Colley for sharing their vision with the people of Burlington and all three candidates, Joe Morandi, Brad and Sarah, for offering their time and service to the town. Thank you Nikki Cadillac of the Burlington Buzz and Sydney Bowles of B News. And finally, thank you to Jen Dodge and the rest of the staff and volunteers here at BCAT for making this forum happen. Remember, Election Day is Saturday, April 6th. The polls at the high school are open from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM and there will be early voting as well. This is your chance to have a direct say in how your town is governed, how Burlington operates. Make sure you take advantage of that right and responsibility. Thank you for watching.